Hope everyone had a great Memorial Day. At this time, we're going to call to order the June 9, 2022 work session. We should not have to sign in. The system should do it for you. Are we good? Great, thank you. May I have a motion for approval of the May 12, 2022 work session minutes? So moved. Did it come up? Please vote. Thank you. The motion has passed. We have the two usual abstentions. I've come to realize that Mr. McMurray won't be voting. And, I know, I know. And, Mr. Aquino, usually I call on Chris and I realize he won't be voting either. And by the way, let us welcome Heather Aquino. She is the interim executive director of Serta and will be serving in the stead of Chris Tomlinson. Thank you. Welcome to the MARTA Board of Directors. First, I'd like to acknowledge and ask for a moment of silence. Acknowledge the loss of one of our MARTA family members. The AGM of Planning, Heather. And I hate, I want to make sure I pronounce this name correctly. Ahaladeth. So let us have a moment of silence in memory of our MARTA family member. Thank you. To continue with the Chair's report. We kicked off our union contract negotiations on May 31, 2022. I want to say thanks so much for being a part of the negotiation kickoff along with our interim CEO, GM, Colleen Greenwood. And I feel as if though we have an opportunity to extend a fair contract to our MARTA employees. We recognize how important it was that our employees, especially all of our employees but our drivers, how important it was during this past pandemic that they were able to make sure that they continued services that were provided for the city and our jurisdictions. And I'm well aware of how our jurisdictions as well appreciate the service that was rendered to their constituents. We came to the table, most of all, to acknowledge that we were coming to the table with the negotiations in good faith. Because any of you who have been a part of any negotiations know that there is such a thing as good faith. And that is with the thought and the idea that we will come out with the win-win on both sides. So I'm excited about the contract negotiations. Now, at this time, I would ask for an update from Mr. Frierson. Ms. Hardage is not here regarding the Statler Virtual Experience Event. Thank you, Mr. Frierson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Statler visit that we went on was very important and beneficial because it allowed the staff and board members to see the inside operations of the railcars being produced. Our experience was that we were able to see the assembly, the inspection, the quality process that Statler uses to ensure that the railcars that MARTA is purchasing will meet our quality expectations. We met with the engineering staff. We met with the senior staff and the assembly workers and was given the inside tour of the production process. We were given a virtual reality experience while we were there. And that allowed us to see the model cars to be assembled from the inside, the outside, and under the railcars. We were able to sit in a mock railcar that was assembled for our visit and sit in the seat of the railcar operator. We experienced hands-on the operation of the railcar by moving this toggle handle that is used by the operator that starts and stops the train as it enters into the railstation. It was a wonderful experience. And finally, we were able to experience through virtual reality while we were there how to work in the maintenance department by removing gearboxes and opening them up and removing bolts and panels and reassembling the parts. So for me and for many of us, I believe the Statler experience gave us a great appreciation for the engineering that is required to build this special type of railcar and the wonderful anticipated experience that we will share once these new cars arrive here at MARTA. We enjoyed the experience. We want to say thank you to Statler for allowing us the opportunity to be in their house. And most of all, they kicked the tires that we are buying for the future. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frierson. Thank you for that report. I think it's very important when our board members participate in any experience or event that they share with us and share with those that are listening via YouTube and understand that we're there to make a difference in their virtual, in their experience when it comes to transportation period. So thank you so much for that update. Also, I would like to acknowledge the new Riders Advisory Council, which their inauguration kickoff was last Wednesday. And if you think that there is no one watching, trust me, at that inaugural kickoff, I met several of the new Riders Advisory Council members who said, "I watch MARTA on YouTube all the time. Could share with me who you all are." They know who and what they expect. So I think it's very important. I think it's important that we hear from them. And I just want to say, I think we've got a new, great team. And as a vision of our previous CEO, it has been an astounding experience to hear from the riders and those that have advised us in certain things that, for instance, I never thought about. And that is making sure that those that may have a problem with sight, that there's a braille available and just different things that we, as a general board member, may not think of. So I want to say kudos and to the inauguration of the Riders Advisory. And I believe that the end of this two-year experience, we will have come forth with additional information that makes sure that we serve our riders and that they are satisfied with the service that we provide. At this time, I'd like to turn over this meeting, the work session, to our GM, CEO, Colleen Greenwood. Thank you, Mr. Greenwood.
Thank you, Chair Scott, and good afternoon, everyone. Before we, before we start with the stated agenda item under the interim GM, CEO, report, I would like to just call to attention for everyone in the room. For those of you that are not aware, Chair Scott, and Chair Scott wasn't expecting this, so we'll surprise her with this. But for those of you that are not aware, Chair Scott has served on APTA's Board of Directors for quite some time. But the recent development there is that she has been requested and appointed to become one of the APTA Executive Committee members. And I just wanted to share with you a couple of excerpts from a colleague's letter to Chair Scott, a colleague that currently serves on the board. "As a fellow committee member," it says, "I want to wholeheartedly welcome you. Your extraordinary leadership and dedication to public transportation will serve the entire APTA team very well, and I can't think of anyone better suited to the committee than you." Furthermore, they write, "Of her past performance on the Board of Directors, your strong leadership on APTA's Board of Directors has helped guide the organization and its members to great success, especially as it relates to workers and workers' rights, and I look forward to meeting you in person." So I think that says a lot about the leadership of Chair Scott, and I just wanted to publicly congratulate her on that role.
I am surprised.
As for the documented agenda item, I'm going to introduce Carrie Rocha. Carrie's our AGM of the CPMO, the Capital Projects Management Office. And Carrie's going to be talking about, you know, an item that has become more high-profile in recent, recent days. And it really is about the Moore-Marta Program Enhanced Bus Service implementation and the financials and responsibilities that go, go around that. But I just wanted to, Carrie, if you'll indulge me, if we can go to the next slide, I'd like to just, you know, summarize much of what, what we expect to hear today and much of what you will see with Carrie's work here. Now typically, as you know, when we make these presentations, we are concise. And we don't kind of take a whole lot of time and we don't hit you with a whole lot of slides. But because of the, the amount of conversation that's been going on around this topic, we thought it prudent to make this a singular item under the CGM, under the GM report today. And Carrie's going to take you through some themes that you will, you will come to recognize. So these themes are listed up here. It speaks of MARTA, MARTA working in partnership with the City of Atlanta. It speaks of MARTA moving quickly to, to enhance the bus service as it was collectively recommended at the time between the city and MARTA. It goes on to talk about the collaboration and the methodology for the projects. Carrie will also talk about the robust public outreach effort and, and all the scenarios that were built to finally arrive at a consensus around the bus service enhancements. We, we will also talk about the, the partnership to talk about the level and type of bus service that we'll be doing going forward. And, and that is why we'll finish with a word about the bus network redesign. But basically, you know, the theme here is that MARTA has been fiscally responsible and accountable to the whole, to the Moore-Marta Program in management of the sales tax revenue, and nothing, nothing has been improper. So we will go through a series of over 20 slides, I suspect. But, but you'll find that Carrie is being very careful to talk about the methodology, the history, the assumptions that were made, and exactly how things were executed in, in alignment with the collaborative decisions of the city and MARTA. So Carrie, with that, I'll ask you to take it away.
Thank you, Colleen. Good afternoon, Chair Scott and Board of Directors. I appreciate this opportunity to produce, to present, rather, what we have compiled in terms of backup. Next slide, please. I will give a brief overview of how we've implemented this bus service and the looks that we have taken at the service enhancements over time. The Moore-Marta Program overview, I know many of you have heard a lot about how we came to where we are with the projects, but just a little refresher of how we got here, just a refresher on the guiding principles of the program. Some of the assumptions that were built into the capital costs as well as the estimates for enhanced bus service. The program timeline, we're going to, we kind of did a snapshot of certain things. There's lots of data out there, but there's some key documents and things that we felt was important to make sure you were aware of. Discussion around sustaining capital. And then lastly, what our next steps are, how we're going to move forward. Next slide, please. So this is just an overall view of kind of where, where we're headed through this discussion. I wanted to kind of lay this out in the very beginning. With the passing of the referendum, we very quickly implemented service over a two-year timeframe. Some was put out very, very quickly, and you'll see the first five routes were, you know, done within months of the referendum being passed. Over time, we have taken a look at that service and how productive that service is, evaluated that, looked at potential operational efficiencies for the service, and made some recommendations. And at the same time, we were asked by the city to look at a bus network redesign. So as we were looking at doing some reductions potentially, we did get asked to look at a holistic look of a redesign. And then we had the impact of COVID to service, right? So we immediately made our, our reduction of service to the roughly 40 or so routes that, that we did during the COVID, COVID service plan. And then now where we are today, where we're undergoing the bus network redesign and kind of as we've resumed that study. Next slide, please. I won't touch on every bullet here because I'm sure you know a lot of the background around the Moore-Marta Program. But in essence, there was a public engagement process, over 70 projects, $11.5 billion of projects, and a process to narrow that list down. We had projections that were to $2.5 billion over the 40-year timeframe. And so we did do a very public and collaborative process to narrow that project list. These, these were in concert with the guiding principles, making sure that everybody was aware of what, what the priorities were for the rollout of Moore-Marta Atlanta. And the list of potential projects, which included enhanced bus service, which is always a very large element of this program, was approved by Atlanta City Council in June of 2016. Throughout 2017, we did a full-force public engagement process and did a lot of listening sessions as well. The city was also updating their own plans that we needed to now incorporate into what we were doing under Moore-Marta. There were 13,000 interactions, over 900 comments received, and 4,200 survey respondents in some of the data that we processed. Next slide. The full methodology is documented, and there's a document that really does spell out the approach to doing the public engagement, and that's called the Moore-Marta Atlanta Technical Summary. And that, you know, I wanted to point out that that document really goes into the detail here. The projects themselves fell in three primary categories, and they were divided into high-capacity transit improvements, bus service improvements, and pedestrian improvements. And I highlight the bus service improvements because those were actually all based on a comprehensive operations analysis. And don't get misled by the COA because we constantly use that for City of Atlanta as well. But this was the comprehensive operations analysis for transit service. It included an analysis for both rail and transit components and making better connections and recommendations on our system. And I'll go into more detail on that. Next slide, please. This is just a refresher of the guiding principles. There were nine guiding principles, and it went through several iterations as well in terms of how we prioritize the different projects and what was most important to the city, to MARTA, and to the, the public, the customers. Next slide. So some of the programmatic assumptions, you know, early on, when you have a concept or don't even have a concept, but you think, you know, you have a project you're trying to move forward, sometimes we use very, very basic estimates. We did a lot of estimating on cost per mile for both capital and operations and maintenance. So all the projects did have an element of both components that went into it. These programming assumptions were also making assumptions on whether there was local and/or federal participation. So as you note, when you're looking at the sequencing plan, many of the projects have stars next to them because they didn't fit within the, the financial model that we needed to build because there needed to be a big assumption for federal dollars. Here are some of the assumptions. Again, I won't go into the details. But the larger projects were essentially assuming some sort of federal participation. And the smaller projects, we were looking to really expedite and do those quicker with local funding. Next slide, please. These were the assumptions that were used in $2016 for capital costs by mode. HRT here is heavy rail transit when we're estimating for heavy rail. Again, operations and maintenance costs are budgeted over 20 years. That is a requirement for any federal funding that we pursue. Next slide. This is an overview of the bus enhancements. So when you look at COA here, this is that comprehensive operational analysis and the recommendations that came out of that report. The implementation side on the, in the blue side is what MARTA has implemented as of December of 2018. Now, I will note that this is enhancements overall. So this is system-wide. This, the 57 of the routes, of all of our routes, are impacted by some sort of Moore-Marta service. So it's a pretty substantial number that we've either modified the route, consolidated, added hours, increased headways. So many of those were noted here as partial recommendations as well. And just to give you a sense of the magnitude of Moore-Marta, I know we reported recently that we've spent $98.8 million to date between FY '17 to FY '21. And that's out of the 100, 1.17 billion overall that we've spent in bus operations. So it's about 8% of our overall bus service that has been towards the Moore-Marta Program. If you look at it within the city itself, overall, we, we operated within that same time period, $477 million worth of service. Of that, 21% of that, the 98.8 million, was for Moore-Marta. So within the city itself, you know, 21% was enhanced bus service under Moore-Marta. Next slide. So I'm just going to hit a couple of timeline points here because I think they're, each one played a role in terms of how this enhanced bus service rolled out. So this is noting the comprehensive operations analysis, which really focused on efficient service and helping, and this was a commissioned study, helping us be able to look at the different opportunities to improve service and to inform the decisions that we were making at the time. It included outreach to the public, looking at different market characteristics, documenting existing conditions, and so forth. It did make major recommendations, looking at the tiered bus service, and there's five levels that were recommended. And it really continued to emphasize the development of frequent network. It focused on corridor-focused routes, making them as linear as possible. So again, the consolidation of certain routes, being able to optimize the routes and creating that linear network, and then looking at an opportunity to contain costs. Next slide. In November of 2016, this was one of the initial letters that went over to the city, acknowledging the passing of the sales tax, what our estimates were, and really starting to outline the process that we were going to use to collaborate with the city, to prioritize the projects, and to execute the, the program management of the program. This letter also noted immediate services being put out kind of as a good-faith effort towards the community for passing the, the tax. And so MARTA wanted to do that as quickly as possible. And, you know, there are many, many meetings and implementation meetings that were held here to do that and to put that out as quickly as possible. And you'll see, we were able to accomplish service being put out by February. The next additional service enhancements were implemented in April of 2017. And it did note that even though we were not able to draw down off the tax, we did want to put that service out again in good faith. Bus service enhancements would continue over the next 18 to 24 months. Next slide, please. This really outlines the path to where we adopted the program. And I just wanted to cover this very quickly because there were lots of different meetings. But again, on the left-hand side is the approval of the tax service startup in February of 2017, the robust public engagement process that happened between November 2016 and September of 2017. And then you see in December of 2017, we actually implemented our first IGA. I note that there because we actually, in advance of that, had really started to meet with the city. And you can see the JPLG meeting that's before the IGA. The JPLG was created under the IGA, but everybody knew, again, we needed to move this program forward very quickly. And so those meetings started in advance of a formal agreement with the city. We went through the project evaluation process, lots of scenarios, iterations, looking at different cost models, looking at different, you know, making sure there was equity across the different regions of the city. And so throughout the development of that plan, I'll just fast-forward, you know, with the adoption of the plan that was in mid-2018. Next slide, please. Couple of things I wanted to point out from the public engagement surveys. And again, this goes to the, the public's want and need for additional bus service, for enhanced bus service. So when the public was asked to rate their top three projects, you can see here, you know, the third top project was increasing bus frequency on existing routes. So clearly, this was, this was something that we knew was very, very important to get out. You also note that introducing new bus routes is further down in new community circulator service. So those were distinct elements that the public had acknowledged that they wanted in the program. Next slide, please. And when asked about potential service improvements, and again, these were both rail and bus service improvements, and many of it was the connections, timing on buses to get to the rail in a reasonable amount of time and making those connections that are so important. You'll see that, you know, frequency is here, extended hours of operation, you know, looking at different hours of the day and increased seating capacity on our buses. Next slide, please. In February of 2017, we did a briefing, and again, this is kind of just going to, you know, immediately we put these, this service out. And there was a whole series of markups that we had proposed for April, which included additional routes in the Moore-Marta Fast Track Program. So these new bus service routes and new service, enhanced service, we called Fast Track. And so you'll see in some of the documents, it refers to those. Some of the initiatives were under the comprehensive operational analysis, and they're noted on each one of those routes that were proposed. And some were also Moore-Marta. So each of them that were in consideration actually had elements of both, and some had elements of none based on different things that we were changing with the service at the time. Next slide, please. In July of 2017, we did go to the city in our jurisdictional briefing and informed them of the same. We informed them that we had implemented service around February 4th with five routes that had frequency improved, and there was more to come. Basically, there was a lot more service, and we were working together to prioritize the projects. Next slide. This is the documentation of the December 2017 IGA. And as, as we know, the MARTA Board of Directors was designated as the official policymaking entity to oversee the Moore-Marta Atlanta Program. The GM and CEO is designated as the day-to-day executive to delegate those responsibilities to the MARTA PMO. It also noted that there was a City of, City of Atlanta liaison who was the responsible point of contact to work with MARTA and MARTA's PMO to coordinate all of the policy and technical coordination. And that person was responsible for, for the coordination with the Office of the Mayor and Atlanta City Council. Next slide. Also, under the IGA, we created the Joint Prioritization Leadership Group. So as I've referred to it as the JPLG. This group included the, the base members that you see here, but could also designate other members as, as was appropriate. Created formal stakeholder advisory committees and technical advisory committee groups, and really for, for them to be able to help with the program prioritization management and making recommendations to the JPLG. And then lastly, I'll note in this agreement, the bus service changes were to be conducted in accordance with the MARTA Act. So the bus services within the City of Atlanta would include expanding service levels on existing routes, enhancing services during midday, nights, and weekends, and that we would work collaboratively with the City of Atlanta liaison to develop that approach. Next slide. This is a memo from the AGM of Planning to the Board of Directors. Again, showing a progress of additional routes had now been increased in frequency and expanded services for 15 of those routes. We were at the time about to complete our public outreach and engagement and really work on the recommendation of the project list. Next slide, please. Among many, many meetings, and again, you saw that the JPLG met several times. This was one in particular where the subject of the amount of, of operational money being spent on the enhanced bus service was raised. As we were working through the financial models and make, trying to fit all the projects into the, the bucket that we wanted to, all the potential projects, they wanted to look at a potential opportunity of maybe we do look at refining or optimizing the bus service that had been put out. The target that had been established was around $7 million a year for operations alone to look at how we could further support additional capital projects within the, the sales tax. Sustaining capital was discussed at this meeting and the understanding, and we'll get a little bit into what is sustaining capital. But that was one of the things that was discussed at this meeting. There was a presentation done at this meeting, which actually made some recommendations for service adjustments. So no routes would have been reduced or removed. I'm sorry, no routes would have been removed at, under this proposed adjustment scenario. But it would, there are three different categories of adjustments that were proposed for savings of roughly $11 million annually. So the, the group that was at this JPLG meeting was milling that over at the time. The initial request was to bring this to the June The initial request was to bring this to the June board meeting to propose some of these reductions, but then the city had actually asked MARTA to take a look at the bus network redesign. So you're kind of seeing that, you know, we, we started looking at making a reduction to service, and with the bus network redesign, everybody said, let's, let's look at this holistically and see if we can be more efficient as we deploy this. Next slide, please. So in November of 2020, well, at this point, right, prior to this COVID hits, of course, and so we had that natural reduction in our service plan that was as a result of COVID. And so that really led into the bus network redesign kind of being put a little bit on hold for a time and then a restart after COVID. Just wanted to note here, this is November 2020. We have a second IGA that was put in place. It replaced the first one. The second IGA really reflected the transition of the program, right, where we're, you're developing the program and now you're moving into an execution model. And so it reinforced the guiding principles. It acknowledged some of the things that were also happening, such as the One Atlanta Transportation Strategic Plan, published in 2019. And so that was really important because as we're doing bus rapid transit and some of those elements, we now are required to incorporate some of the elements of that plan into our designs and our concepts. It reflected the sequencing plan that had now been adopted, and it added some governance, right? So it, it added the Program Governance Committee, the Program Management Team, and the Project Technical Committee. It also established that we put in place project-based agreements. So those project-based agreements are really important for each project where we sit and work with the city at a 30% design phase, once we know the concept and we know what we're building, and we sit and decide what's the scope, what's the schedule, and what's the budget on the project. We kind of lock that in at that point in time. Next slide. So I'll just cover real briefly the bus network redesign. I know this has been a recent discussion, and I know we're, we're getting ready to really roll out some decisions on this. It's really an analysis of looking at a new system of routes and looking at the opportunities of can we be more efficient with how we're operating our bus service? We have looked at different models and, and the approach that our consultant has is looking at coverage, so being able to reach lots of places, but maybe less frequency or ridership where you have more frequency and it's based on where there's more people riding the system. Next slide. So why are we doing this? As I noted, this was, you know, we, we saw that bus service was rising in terms of the operational costs and what we were putting out under more MARTA. And this fresh look at this was an opportunity to really help us refine and optimize, making sure that with changing travel patterns, especially after COVID, and knowing that, you know, folks are not traveling the way they were prior to COVID, that we are making whatever adjustments that we need to, to be most efficient, to provide better access for jobs, education, and essential services, and really help to ensure that our bus network connects to all the modes that we need it to connect to. Next slide. In terms of sustaining capital, I know this has been a, a question that we've gotten, so we wanted to make sure we, we covered this. You know, sustaining capital really covers any of the, the service impact on, on core MARTA system assets. So if we need to replace a bus on a particular part of our system, we replace that bus. It's not an expansion, but it's really to maintain our system in a, in a way that, you know, it's, it's to make sure that the service continues the way it is. It's, it is not an, an expansion piece, and I want to be very clear that this is not expansion, but this is to support the assets. It is based, the assumptions that we have used are based on a three-year rolling average for actual expenses of what we have spent for sustaining capital. Next slide. So to reiterate what Colleen had started off in the beginning, we want to make sure that the board knew that we worked very, very hard, very quickly to put this enhanced bus service, we worked collaboratively to do that. We implemented the methodology for projects and, again, worked with the public and worked with all the stakeholders in terms of how we moved the program forward, and that did include our enhanced bus service. We launched a robust public outreach effort to get this consensus and to build the consensus around both bus service and the capital projects that were in the program and that fit within the fiscal model that we had built, that we have worked to secure federal funding to offset these bus enhancements. We so far have received $16.8 million in CMAC funds for the enhanced bus service alone for more MARTA. And we anticipate that there would be one more year of that 8.4 million once we resume regular service on the routes that we had proposed within the, the grant. Our bus network redesign is moving forward, and it's a very, very important piece of what we, what we do to make decisions going forward, and a reminder that we have been fiscally responsible and accountable to the more MARTA program in the management of the sales tax. And Colleen, I will turn that back, back over to you and Chair Scott. Oh, I'm sorry, I have one more. One more, next steps, sorry. So our next steps, we will, we will continue to generate the more MARTA financial report that was presented to City Council quarterly on an ongoing basis, and we'll be updating that report on every quarter. The CPMO will continue to monitor the project costs, and as I mentioned, the 30% design commitments of scope, schedule, and budget will be locked in at that, at that milestone. We will continue our collaborative approach in working with the city and ABI on our project concepts and the progression of our designs. We're working on many, many of projects at, at this time with them at the table with us. We will work on calibrating the financial model, and again, as we know, enhanced bus service has had some substantial costs, as well as our project costs have increased based on the designs, as well as the financial environment that we're in today. And so we will work on calibrating that model for our overall sequencing plan. We will evaluate additional funding opportunities, and we continue to put grant applications out for all these projects as, as much as possible so that we can capture as much in the federal funding realm as we can. And then lastly, on the bus network redesign, we are, you know, we really are moving into that last phase of the policymaking and implementation. So now I'll turn it back to you, Colleen.
Thank you, Carrie. So Chair Scott, that really was a, you know, a summary of what MARTA's involvement has been to date, you know, salient points being that it's been in collaboration with the City of Atlanta, that, that enhanced bus service in the City of Atlanta was always part of our mandate, and it continues to be, and also that we've been fiscally transparent and responsible in this process. And then also to, you know, to, to put a point, a pin on, sorry, to, to emphasize what, what Carrie's already said, that the bus network redesign program is, is actually intended to achieve that very objective of taking what we have in terms of resources for buses, making a decision, and it's not, you know, increased frequency and more coverage, it's in free, increased frequency or more coverage, and not to the fact that we only have one pot of money to deal with, and we're just trying to get the best product possible out there for the citizens of Atlanta that, that so desperately deserve it. And so that that process continues, as the board is aware, we, we've, we've been talking to the board about this bus network redesign as early as February 2021. And it's an iterative process. There's a lot of community outreach and engagement. There are countless CIDs and stakeholder communities and elected officials and land use planners and transportation engineers from all the jurisdictions that have been involved in this. There have been two weeks of, you know, every design retreats going on. And just when we thought we had it right, we, we'd go back out to the public with four more sessions in person and hybrid. We've collected over 8,300 comments from face-to-face questionnaires and online questionnaires, and that process remains open, and, and that we are coming back to the board as promised because the board is ultimately going to be involved in making a policy decision in terms of, you know, an expression of the bus service that we're going to provide as an expression of the amount of budget, whether how much of it is going towards ridership and how much of it is going towards reach, if you will. So I wanted to thank Carrie for putting all, all of that together. I know there was a lot there to unpack, but we thought we would leave it with you in the state that it's in so that we could have further discussion.
Yep. Mr. Mullis.
Thank you, Mr. Greenwood. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Thank you, Carrie, for a fine presentation. Is Raj here?
Yep, Raj is here.
Raj is the superstar for me here because we always have these wonderful surpluses in our budget. And Raj, we ran a, a pretty healthy surplus since I've been on the board since January on our operations. I think we were approaching $150 million surplus. Is that accurate?
That's about correct.
Okay. And that's just on operations, is that correct?
That's correct.
And of that $150 million, it's a combination of some savings in expenses, labor primarily, and then we getting some additional revenue from sales tax, and then we got a, some grants that we got from the federal government. Is that an accurate assessment?
That's correct. It's a combination of additional revenues, which we received from some of the stimulus grants, as well as some higher sales tax revenues, and a reduction in expenses based on the high number of vacancies we have.
And, and, and so the last time I, I looked at it, we were some, I think we looked at March, April timeframe, we were running about 665 positions that we were down in the maintenance and bus drivers area, is that correct?
That's in the ballpark, yeah.
Yes, that's in the ballpark, okay. And because we were down, were we cutting routes also? Were we delaying routes and were we not having routes, canceling routes?
I'm going to briefly address this, then turn it over to Mr. Greenwood. Best of my knowledge, we did not cut any routes, but because of any financial issues, I believe mostly it's a labor issue.
Labor issues, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Labor issues, right?
Yeah, thank, thank you, Raj. So as you know, there was a consolidation of routes from 110 down to 40.
Right.
And that, but, you know, the resources, as many resources as we had were continually scheduled, it's just to increase the frequency of those, those schedules. But the, the choke point, if you will, would be the availability of resources. So vacancies and absenteeism created, you know, a, a skinnier, if you will, service than scheduled.
Right. So how many of those routes were canceled in, are reduced or impacted in a way that we wouldn't like, liked it to be in the more MARTA territory? Do we know that?
I don't know if we've cut, I, I mean, again, MARTA operates holistically, right? So we're looking holistically, we wanted to serve the most significant routes with the, with the health centers and the essential services and all that. So we looked at this thing in the face of a pandemic holistically. We, we were not deliberately targeting City of Atlanta versus various jurisdictions. I'm not sure if we have on hand what the, the net result was to the City of Atlanta routes, but we can certainly get that.
Yeah, if you could just provide that to me sometime. I'm sure Reggie would like to see it also, right? How much for bus enhanced services did the City of Atlanta pay in, when, since I've been on board fiscal year 2022?
Well, while Carrie's looking that up, I will say that, you know, while I don't have the number of routes that were affected inside City of Atlanta, I do know from recollection that the, the costs to City of Atlanta were drastically reduced during the COVID era. I mean, we're not out of it, but during, during that reduction, the costs to City of Atlanta were properly reduced, so it was a significant savings. I don't know if, to the answer, to the second question, if Carrie's found that.
Yeah, I don't have that number because we have not completed FY 2022. I know that we were budgeted for 21.1 million this year for, for bus operations alone for operating cost for more MARTA, just to be clear.
So we have a surplus of 150 million, but we're charging more MARTA 21 million, is that correct?
I, I, I mean, she'd said we are budgeted, but, you know, those are not the actuals yet. Once we close the year, we'll have the actuals for all of MARTA, then we'll figure out what the portion that would be allocable to more MARTA program.
And the, and the surplus, just help me remember the surplus. The surplus does not go back into carrying forward to the next operation budget. It goes into the big capital improvement pot that's inside of the state of good repair and maybe more MARTA, but it's, is that accurate?
Unfortunately, no. Let me just make a slight correction to that. The more MARTA surplus or any balance carried over is not mixed with the overall surplus, that's tracked separately. In, in other words, what we, we have what's called the core penny surplus, that's for the entire system. Then we have balance brought forward for both the Clayton County one penny tax and the half a penny City of Atlanta tax. Those are all accounted for, tracked separately.
So just to make sure that I, I'm getting it right. So I want to be accurate. The 150 million of the surplus that we're projecting at the end of this month, June the 30th, we, we'll put that in a capital budget, is that correct?
Yes, some of it, it's not just 150, some of that we have been carrying over for the, from the prior years as well.
But it, but it will go into a capital budget, is that correct?
Bulk of it, correct, not all of it, bulk of it, yes.
And how is that capital budget split up between Clayton County, State of Good Repair, and more MARTA?
They're, they're all distinct and separate.
Yeah. These funds, we do not mix more MARTA Atlanta half penny with our regular local money for state of good repair expansion and the state of good repair stay completely separate. When, and so any of the, you know, if there's excess or reserves or balance remaining, that stays within the more MARTA program. And then the same thing on the local side, that stays within the local program, and the more MARTA Clayton, that stays within the Clayton program.
Well, I, I'm, I'm, I'm not as smart, I'm trying to figure out what happens to 150 million dollars. Where does that money go?
I, I, I think, you know, first thing, that's an estimate as of a certain point, subject to audit, subject to year-end closing adjustments and all that, but let's assume it's what it's going to end up. There, there are, as Carrie correctly pointed out, we track anything that's left over in the half penny City of Atlanta separately, and that balance or excess or reserve, whatever you want to call that, will not be used to support any other program other than the City of Atlanta program. So that's one thing I want to be very clear about. So to your question, you know, I, we have not passed out the 150, what is allocable to which one, but we will do that. And again, the, the, I, I guess the message, this one message I want to convey is, you know, none of those are mixed or intermingled, if you will. The City of Atlanta half a penny, the Clayton County one penny, and what we call the core penny tax, anything that's left over from either of those three sources are tracked separately, and they're not intermingled.
Yeah, I, I, I got that. I'm asking about the 150 million dollars, and how is that allocated?
I, I, I mean, i- i- it's the same as we have carried over some of the surplus from the last year or two. So any surplus we have carried over, which is allocable to the core penny tax, bulk of it has gone to the state of good repair capital program, which is independent of the City of Atlanta and independent of the Clayton penny program.
So, so just to be clear, $21 million from more MARTA goes to the bus service, is that correct?
That's a budget.
That's a budget.
Yeah.
And to be clear, we don't know what the impact of the labor issues we've had during COVID has impacted the more MARTA enhanced bus services, is that correct?
Yeah, I, I mean, at the end of, once we close the year, we'll see if 21 is the budget, you know, the actuals do turn out to either 21 or something less than that or something more than that, then the reserve or the balance carried forward will be adjusted accordingly.
Thank you for clearing that up for me.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Bill Sloan.
Thank you. In terms of the bus network redesign and the role In terms of the bus network redesign and the roles that these, I don't know all the acronyms, but JPLG and those roles, how are the board members for those communities involved in that? The MARTA board members, are they involved in any of those committees, sessions, workshops? How are the board members interacting in that process?
I'm going to ask Manjeet Renew to take this question.
Okay.
Good afternoon. So the JPLG was replaced. That was the first intergovernmental agreement that was supplanted by the current one that's in place. And it has essentially two committees. The program management team, which is more technical oriented, and that's between the City of Atlanta staff and the MARTA staff. And then there's the program governments committee, which is the executive level staff of MARTA and the city. And so actually, what you'll see is we come forward eventually here this summer with the Hamilton recommended locally preferred alternative. It will go through a process, and because it's in the City of Atlanta and that's an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Atlanta, then the three board members for the City of Atlanta are consulted on that prior to it coming to the board as a whole.
So they're actually given a presentation of what's been done or what's being done? They're not actively involved in the work itself?
Yes, they are as part of the board as a whole.
I don't think that's what I was asking.
I apologize. We didn't understand what you're asking.
I know that we're talking about City of Atlanta. And so the City of Atlanta board members are not engaging with these processes that you all have along the way?
That's correct. They're not members of those two committees.
They don't have to be a member of the committee to be involved. And I think that it's, frankly, I think that it's, it doesn't serve well for the board members that represent their communities to not be involved until they come to the point of a presentation. And if there's disagreement, if there's, you know, pushback or whatever, then you've got to go all the way back again and try to make that right. I just think it would be more representative if the board members were involved. And City of Atlanta board members can speak for themselves. But that was just in my, I think there were, you listed about six different committees and groups and what have you. And they don't have to be members of those to be involved.
Appreciate the feedback. Thank you.
Yeah. Roberta, I could speak to some of what we've been doing. I have been briefed on some of the Hamilton Road kind of projects and what we've been doing. I went to a community open house with the MARTA executive staff and some of the staff members. I've been, and I know Raj has been as well, trying to be as actively involved as possible. I certainly haven't been shut out of it. And I think that Manjeet and Colley and all the other staff have tried to be as transparent and informative as was possible. We are trying to, in a very intentional and substantive way, inform the community, not necessarily to win people over per se, but to make sure that everybody understands what it is we're doing and why. And so that was my agenda. That was my intent in getting involved. And I think that they've been very helpful to do that. So I understand your point. I agree with it. I just don't, I think that we are being involved and informed more than you probably realize. So we are very involved, are very interested to make sure we do this right. There will not ever be 100% buy-in, but we very much want to make sure we communicate it clearly, what we're doing and why.
Thank you for that clarification. Thank you, Manjeet.
Thank you.
If there are no further, oh, Mr. Floyd.
One question. I apologize for this question because I have been out of the country. And for those of you who don't know, if you're in Europe, when they bring up the Atlanta Journal, I do read the paper and I do subscribe to the paper, but it does not allow you to read it over there. It has these privacy things that pop up. So I could see the headline, but I couldn't read the article. So, which I can't say that I really wanted to, but in any event, the question is, and so I have not read the article, but I'll ask the question because of this item six here where you say nothing has been improper. Did that article accuse MARTA of doing something improper? And what was that, if it did?
The article, the author did not, but the author cited concerns from others of financial malfeasance.
Ah, okay. So maybe I ought to go back and read that article then. Thank you.
Thank you. And if there are no further questions, Chair Scott, I'll return the matter to you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Thanks for the report. And just wanted to clarify also, Ms. Abdullah, your light's still on. Is there?
Thank you.
Great. And thank the Atlanta board members because we have been in conversations about being involved in the Atlanta transit inquiries. And so thank you so much. At this time, may I have a motion for executive session for the issue of real estate?
Move.
Thank you. Raise your hands. Thank you. At this time, we will go into executive session.
I just wait for her. For those of us who can't.
And a cute.
Oh, I know. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Good to see you again. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Sixty-one years old.
That's why, that's what we gotta get out there and go all the way down. It's only four days.
Oh, no, but it's only four days.
And then between now and November is gonna get pretty far. As I told, we need all the numbers. Not just two. But we need both. But we still need, but, yeah, we still need both.
Good afternoon, everyone. At this time, I will call to order the June ninth, twenty twenty-two MARTA Board of Directors meeting to order. I have a motion to move the public comments to the end.
So moved.
Let us vote.
Thank you.
Sorry, mic wasn't on. May I have a motion for approval of the May twelfth, twenty twenty-two Board of Directors meeting minutes? Do I have a motion? Thank you. Do I have a second? Let us vote. The motion has passed. At this time, we will hear from our committee reports, External Relations Committee. Ms. Catherine Powers.
Madam Chair, the External Relations Committee met on Thursday, May nineteenth, twenty twenty-two and received the following briefings. A. Riders Advisory Council, RAC, update. B. MARTA Reach update. Madam Chair, this concludes my report.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from the Audit Committee. Mr. Floyd.
Madam Chair, I'm substituting for Rita Hardidge today, who, I'm not sure where she is. I'm somewhere at fun. The Audit Committee met on Thursday, May nineteenth, twenty twenty-two and received the following briefings. MARTA FY twenty-two External Audit Engagement. Item B, the Internal Audit Activity Briefing. Item C, FY twenty-three Proposed Internal Audit Plan. Madam Chair, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor Floyd. Planning and Capital Programs Committee report, Mr. Pond.
Madam Chair, the Planning and Capital Programs Committee met on Thursday, May twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-two and approved the following briefings. A. Capital Programs FY twenty-two Third Quarter Update. Madam Chair, this concludes my report.
Thank you. At this time, we will hear from the Operations and Safety Committee. Report, Ms. Roberta Abdul Salam.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The, excuse me, the Operations and Safety Committee met on Thursday, May twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two and approved the following resolutions. Resolution authorizing a modification in contractual authorization for preventive maintenance and repair services for bus fire suppression and gas detection systems. IFB B four one one three two A. Second resolution. Resolution authorizing the solicitation of proposals for the procurement of para-transit vehicles. RFP P five zero one eight two. Resolution authorizing the award of contracts for the procurement of targeted cleaning services. IFB eight, B four seven five three.
I have a motion.
Seven five three zero. I request approval of these resolutions, Madam Chair.
Do I have a second? So moved. Let us vote. Thank you. The resolutions have passed. At this time, oh, I'm sorry.
The committee received the following briefing, Safety Management Systems, SMS. Madam Chair, this concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Abdul Salam. Next, we'll hear from the Business Management Committee, Mr. Frierson.
Madam Chair, the Business Management Committee met on Thursday, May twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two and approved the following resolutions. A. A resolution authorizing the solicitation of proposals for the procurement of transit bus shelters and advertising. RFP P five zero one four five. Item B. A resolution authorizing modification in contractual authorization for desktop equipment and deployment services. RFP P three eight five six seven dash A. C. A resolution authorizing a modification in contractual authorizations for the renewal of maintenance support for the Cisco Smart Net devices. IFB B four seven five one one. D. A resolution authorizing the award of a contract for the procurement of employee voluntary benefit programs. RFP P four four eight seven three five. E. A resolution authorizing modification in contractual authorization for the master agreement services. LOA L five zero zero five seven. And item F. A resolution to approve the operating and capital budget for FY twenty twenty-three. I request approval of these resolutions.
Do I have a second? So moved. Let us vote. The resolutions have passed.
The committee received the following briefing, FY twenty twenty-two March Financial Highlights and Financial Performance Indicators. Madam Chair, this concludes my report.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to read a resolution that has come before the board. Resolution authorizing the execution of a ground lease agreement with the city of Brookhaven for the development of a city hall at the MARTA Brookhaven Oglethorpe Station MARTA Parcel D three one one six. May I have a motion for the approval of the resolution?
Madam Chair, I'm proud of it.
Second. Thank you. Let us vote. The resolution has passed. Before we move into, um, um, a little bit, because we moved those comments to the end, but are there any other matters to come before the board prior to going to public comments?
Madam Chair, if I may, just very briefly, I won't go into the details as the board has these on their agenda, but there are a number of upcoming committee meetings and board meetings, regular committee meetings and board meetings in your packets. I will note two items that are apta engagements. One is the APTA Transit Board Members and Transit Board Administrative Seminar in Utah on July thirtieth and the APTA Transform Conference in Seattle on October ninth. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Are there any other matters to come before the board? Yes, ma'am. Ms. Abdul Salam.
Yes, just to get back in on Mr. Greenwood's comment, in the events of APTA, again, as membership chair for the Transit Board Members Committee, I really encourage you, if you're not already a member and already engaged, to please do so. Get involved. It's invaluable information. You make a lot of good network connections. Thank you.
Thank you, and we, I think we see that even from the sharing of Mr. Frierson regarding attending the Experience event. Are there any other comments from the board at this time? Hearing none, we're going to now finish or start on our public comments, and I'd like to read the following statement. "The public will not be allowed to yield or donate time to other speakers. The public comment portion of the meeting will not exceed forty-five minutes. In the event the forty-five minute timeframe is reached prior to public comments being completed, public comments will be suspended and the board meeting will convene. Public comments will resume at the end of the board meeting." Mr. Andrews, I have visible public comments here. Are there any comments via email or voicemail?
Yes, ma'am. We received one via email from Ed Williams, Chair of the Concerned Citizens for Effective Government. A copy of the entire email will be placed into the minutes, or the record minutes, but the summary of it is, Mr. Williams is notifying the board that MARTA is seeking attorney fees from him in relation to a lawsuit that was filed challenging the legitimacy of the extension of the rapid transit contract agreements and that he does not believe that it's fair for us to be seeking damages or legal fees, or attorney's fees, excuse me, from him. But the entire email in its form that we received will be placed into the minutes for your review.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. At this time, we will hear from Sherri Williams. Ms. Williams, your public comment.
Thank you. I'm here today to remind, thank, and to caution you. I want to remind you that we've come a long way since twenty seventeen, when we lost ground earlier this year on the Hamilton Corridor project. It is my pleasure to report that after numerous blunders, missteps, and just plain old fumbling, that the staff finally presented a true LRT BRT side-by-side comparison of modes for the Hamilton Corridor about two weeks ago. I want to thank all the board members who attended on May twenty-first, board members Frierson, Mullis, Snyder, and Scott. I also want to caution you to be aware that the lawless voices are often not the voices of those with the greatest need, and often the lawless voices are not even transit riders. Be very careful with the amount of funds and additional infrastructure funding coming soon from the federal government. Be aware that the Belt Line Rail Now people have already started licking their chops and engaging in deceptive practices in order to get buy-ins from NPUs in an effort to get more support and funding. Those who need the service the most are not organized and do not have the resources. So only is the real, so only, that is why real community engagement is necessary, critical, and it should continue in its current model and use it as best practices. And look at bringing in in-house. In-house community engagement will give you better control. Last but not least, also, a survey does not contain good data when you don't ask how often they ride transit. Most of those with the loudest voices don't use it or rarely use it. This is a slap in the face to transit dependent riders, and it is a huge equity issue. Atlanta being the number one city with the greatest income disparities is the reason why you, as board members, must address and support equity initiatives all across the MARTA jurisdictions. Thank you.
Thank you. Well received. Thank you. Dr. Ed Williams, from the Concerned Citizens for Effective Government.
Good afternoon, Board. My name is Ed Williams. I have not spoken to the board in over two years since COVID- nineteen started, but I want to put a face with a name. I'm the person behind the lawsuit against MARTA, and right now, I'm kind of disheartened the fact that MARTA is suing me for legal fees when I'm exercising my First Amendment right to petition my government. If you all were actually standing in my shoes, you would not want to be sued by your own government for exercising your First Amendment right to petition your government. That's the most important right we have as citizens of the United States. I take great offense at MARTA suing me for exercising my constitutional right, and that not only is a US constitutional right, it is a Georgia constitutional right to petition the government. Now, let me say two things about my lawsuit. In nineteen seventy-one, we passed a referendum. The citizens, I was seven years old then, but the citizens fifty years ago passed a referendum. That referendum was supposed to end last year. It was never intended, in fact, in the Georgia Constitution, no contract can be more than fifty years. It is never intended for a government to slay, enslave its people more than fifty years without it coming back to its citizens. That's all I'm asking for. I'm not trying to dissolve MARTA. I don't want to get rid of MARTA. I'm just saying, MARTA, you need to respect your citizens. Fulton and DeKalb County, come back to us and ask us for a vote and what we want to have done. We did not seek to have a diverse void like you all are here, for you all to deny us our rights. This is what you all are doing. You all are denying the citizens their right to be heard and to vote. That is not what the people in the sixties and the fifties marched for. And so, I'm asking you to stop hollering and nailing from suing me for legal fees and for you all to hold a referendum for the people to vote on a new contract. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. At this time, we hear from Michael Fleming from Beltline Rail Now. Is that word rent, Mr. Fleming?
Yeah, Beltline Rail Now, yes.
Rail Now, okay, great. Thank you.
Yes, Michael Fleming, I'm treasurer of Beltline Rail Now. As my colleague Lawrence Miller will also discuss, the reason we feel like there's been some decisions made that weren't made in public and have been kept hidden for five years is because this board, at the end of twenty eighteen, adopted a more MARTA Atlanta program that said five hundred seventy million dollars for the Beltline, six hundred plus for Southeast-Southwest, and two hundred and thirty-eight million dollars for bus system improvements. It did not say, what this board adopted, that you were going to split the penny in half and put half of it in the current operating budget. Now, maybe there was a legitimate committee that made that decision, but it was not made in front of the public. So I would also call your attention that in the budget book, that's available on the website, there is a seventy-five and a half million dollar allocation that reduces all of the operating budgets. Now, if that was seventy-five and a half million dollars in extra revenue, wouldn't that go on the revenue side? And if it's actual cost savings, wouldn't that come out of the operating budgets? I'll give you the example of the General Manager's Office, since it's number one in the list. The real budget is one point four million dollars, seven hundred plus in staff and seven hundred plus in nonlabor, but when you take the nine hundred and twenty-five allocation out of the seventy-five million out of that, what gets shown on all the summaries is five hundred thousand. What is that about?
Thank you so much. Waiting for the clock to stop. Thank you. At this time, we will hear from State Representative Viola Davis, Georgia House District Eighty-seven. Good afternoon, State Rep. Davis.
Good afternoon, and I'm Representative Viola Davis, House District Eighty-seven. I hear in support of Dr. Ed Williams because I was rather shocked to learn that we actually are going after a private citizen for attorney fees for petitioning their government, exercising their First Amendment right. I was so shocked that I did an open records. I said, I want to know how much money we have spent in attorney fees. I did that on June first. I did not even receive an acknowledgement of my open records. I did not receive any type of written notice. So I sent a second notice to you, and I also put it on your site and took a picture and sent you the picture. First of all, I shouldn't have to be waiting for you to answer my open records. Second, I also asked for a rundown of the debt service. I needed to be breaking, broken down. We did a the equity assessment, that's for transportation, health, and education. We have already found that with the ATL and I twenty, they're doing about five hundred million in projects. I twenty West, they're doing about four hundred to five hundred million. But when you talk about nobody up to four hundred, seventy-five, eighty-five, you are talking about twelve to thirteen billion dollars. What we wanted to do is find out what is the root cause for this disparity in funding? Why is there some problems with representation? Because if you have representation, you have problem with funding. If you have problem with funding, you have problem with services. It is important that we get to the bottom, the root cause of these disparities, and we come up with a corrective action plan. And last but not least, I think that for citizens to have two minutes or less, when you have less than ten people speaking, is an atrocity in itself. When it's less than ten, it wouldn't hurt to go up to three minutes. Be blessed.
At this time, we will hear from Jay Lawrence Miller.
Good afternoon. I'm Jay Lawrence Miller, I'm the president of Atlanta Neighborhood, Adair Park. I'm also on the Board of Directors for Beltline Rail Now, but I came up here to say some stuff, but listening to the presentation this morning, you know, we all wear different hats, and I have to put on my resident hat, citizen resident hat, rather than my Beltline Rail Now hat, and I apologize to my colleagues for that. I don't understand the presentation given this morning. I think that it was wonderful that Carrie shared, that colleague contributed to. But what happened to rail in the city? There's a commitment from the mayor, from rail, from the city council for rail, not just along Hamilton, but along the other routes that had been initially approved. We agreed, I'm a poor man, and I agreed to a regressive tax because I was convinced by MARTA in two thousand and sixteen that rail would happen. For me, I live nine minutes away from the Western MARTA station. I can't walk that far. I live three minutes away from the Atlanta Beltline entrance, the West Side Trail. I can walk that far. A number of the residents in my neighborhood feel the same way, especially the elderly legacy residents whom I represent. I'm concerned that so much time was talked about bus. Bus is important, but so little, if anything, was talked about rail. In the sheet four that Carrie showed, the number one issue on there was rail, but she jumped down to the number three issue, which was buses. And I'm concerned that the MARTA Board hasn't come out with an absolute statement that says that rail is important, increasing rail in the metro area, within Atlanta, within the metro area, is important. All other leaders have. When we talk to MARTA staff, what MARTA staff says is, we are guided by the MARTA Board. And when we talk to the MARTA Board, we're told, we take recommendations from staff. It's an endless circle, and I think it's time for that circle to end, and I just ask that you make a decision. If we're going to move forward in rail in this area, please make a statement to that effect. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. At this time, we will hear from Brian Sumlin.
Hello, good afternoon, MARTA. I'm a frequent user and an Atlanta resident of a Beltline and Court at Hamilton Corridor Neighborhood. Continuing on with the discussion about Atlanta's transportation priorities, back in April, we submitted a project list endorsed by the city council, and after last month's report to the council, it is determined that the more MARTA program does need recalibration because there are major discrepancies in the program, and it's being perceived that MARTA is not, is being toned down and not supportive towards the community desires. As a reminder, the Hamilton Road Corridor Project slated as LRT is on the top of the list because the desperate is so need for that corridor. We need to follow the roadmap of the people's projects because these are the projects that the community put on the list. Also, about the Beltline, it was and is slated for LRT. It's important that these corridors be saved as LRT because the infrastructure programs are the people's money. Revenue is from the ridership of the MARTA system, the community's hard-earned contributions is the people's revenues and not MARTA. The community looks forward, we're working with you, as well as participating in the entire process of system design and implementation. Also, it is proven evidence that the streetcar is proven to be cost-effective per your report to the city council last month in May. So part of equity and inclusion is that we should be applying for all types of funding, and we should be adaptive to the evolution of all types of systems, including LRT and the streetcar, and we have this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to secure the funding of the new infrastructure program because these systems are innovative. Thank you.
At this time, the MARTA Board Directors Meeting is hereby adjourned. Thank you, and everyone have a great rest of the day.